We have 28 Brentwood Circle in front of us for a Form A. Is there someone? Please, use either the podium or one of the microphones over here, please. That's fine. Just give us your name and your presentation.
Greg Maynard, 28 Brentwood Circle. We have the LCA and our approval for the decision on the town meeting to move the property line out towards that cul-de-sac where the road was built to, as opposed to property line coming through the front yard.
Okay. I'm gonna bring it out to staff first.
Staff has no objections to this. I think like the applicant said, it's a disused portion of the right-of-way currently that was, the road itself was extended to finish build out of Brentwood and Glendale, so it's basically being used as their front lawn now, so.
Peg, anything from you?
No, no problem.
Jim?
No, I checked with staff. There's no effect on the roadway as it's presently laid out, no problem with the fire department or anything like that, so. I don't know if we should post it for the audience, or do we need to? The plan itself, do we all have a plan?
You didn't bring a plan with you at all?
I'm sorry.
Did you bring a plan with you?
Is there an storm in the boulder?
I don't believe so.
Nope, dropped off like six copies.
Yeah, everything's on computer though. We wanted the audience to see. Anything else, Jim?
Nope, I'm fine.
Charles?
No questions.
Nathaniel?
Oh, nothing, thanks.
Okay. I don't have anything, so. I'm looking for a motion. So, Charles?
Okay. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on July 23, 2019, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted, we, the Danvers Planning Board, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81P, and as provided for in Section 3 of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land in Danvers, do hereby vote that the plan entitled Plan of Land 28 Brentwood Circle, Danvers, Massachusetts, prepared for Gregory J. and Linda N. Maynard, prepared by Le Blank Survey Associates, Inc., 161 Holden Street, Danvers, Massachusetts, 01923, dated January 4, 2019, scale 1 inch equals 30 feet, submitted by Gregory J. and Linda N. Maynard, does not constitute a subdivision within the meaning of the subdivision control law, and therefore is entitled to endorsement as approval not required.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have continued public hearings.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Ink Cups Now. Also with me is Elaine Brown, the Vice President of Operations, Michael Radner, our Landscape Architect, Harry Semelcheck, our Project Designer, and Scott Cameron, our Project Engineer. And we're talking about the property at 310 Andover Street, and you'll recall at the last Planning Board meeting, we made a full presentation of this project, which consists of the construction of a new, primarily warehouse, but also some office space building located at the front of the site. The existing building, which has been in existence since the early 80s, is located at the back of the site, and we presented the full plan to you at that time. When we concluded our presentation, we got information from the board, as well as some audience members, and we discussed some screening and security, if you will, of the detention areas, as well as some lighting concerns. So, since the last meeting, we've actually done quite a bit with regard to the comments that we received, and we submitted to you some revised plans, which addressed all of the Engineering Department comments, and you do have a final letter from the Engineering Department recommending approval of the plan. And we submitted revised plans to address the comments that we heard, and I'll just run through specifically the changes that we made to the plans to address those comments. Item number one, we revised the planting and the curb lines in the front parking area, which we had actually presented to you at the last meeting, and that was to address the fire department's comments for turning movements within this parking area, and I believe the fire department has approved the revised plan. We've added some additional segmented block retaining wall along Andover Street side of the parking lot to create the level area, and that's shown on this detail here for planting, and that resulted from the shift that we had to make to accommodate the fire department turnaround. We added, and these, the next items, those were changes again for the fire department's comments that they had made. We made some other changes, specifically that came out of our Planning Board meeting. First, we added a six-foot-high vinyl fence along this entire lot line here to address the concern of this detention area in the back, as well as the, it runs along the side and out into the front. And we had talked about doing some limited fencing back in the rear, which seemed to be of the most concern to some of the board members, but it was also mentioned placing a fence along the entire lot line, which we are doing, and that also provides a buffer that I think some of the board members also were interested in. So, we are proposing a vinyl fence the entire length of the lot line. We have added some larger boulders, which we discussed at the end of the meeting, along the Andover Street lot line, again as a deterrent from anyone seeking to have their, get into the detention area there. And one thing that we did, that we didn't discuss with the board, that we thought, having heard the comments, we actually reduced the height of the light poles from 20 feet down to 18 feet. We also did a little survey at night of the lighting on the existing building and what's going on there, and in fact, there are two lights specifically that are located on the two corners of the building that have been on in the evening and through the night, and the applicant has contracted with an electrical contractor to put the lighting on timers, so that the lighting on the site will go off at 7 o'clock. There will remain some security lightings at the rear of the building, but we don't have any residential neighbors in that area. I think that is it. That's what we've done, and I think we have addressed all of the concerns that we heard from the board and from the audience at the last meeting. We have our full team here tonight. Do you have any questions?
I think from staff before we proceed.
The only thing I had, in terms of planning of the site plan, I'm all good. If they should proceed to an approval, just two minor conditions indicating that plan revisions will be needed for the stormwater connection and sewer connection in Andover Street itself.
I'm gonna open up to the board, Jim?
A question about that?
Could you clarify what that condition is? We're not working in Andover Street.
When you submitted, the question, the initial comments from Engineering on the plan, it said connections in Andover Street to be verified in the field, that they said, I believe it was you or John, said the connections were very deep and they were unable to be located currently?
Yeah, to clarify that, so, the connection for the drainage actually extends into the site already, and also the sewer is on the site. So, there is no reason, we don't anticipate filing with Mass DOT for this, because all the work is on the property. So, it don't affect the service, so I don't, there's really no reason for that condition.
That's fair. I mean, again, I guess in terms of to satisfy the Engineering Division itself, it's really just field verification, if you're connecting, if you're not connecting, you're not connecting. I mean, it's kind of a...
Yeah, if necessary, yeah.
Exactly.
It would be a moot point.
Yeah.
Exactly. If it's not necessary, you don't need to do it.
Jim?
No, I like the fence, I like the boulders. I was just wondering on the size of the boulders, I mean, you say large boulders, it's a little subjective, do we have any idea? I'm not trying to be difficult, but is it?
How large is a large boulder?
Michael Radner with Radner Design Associates, so how large would you like to see the boulders? I'm not trying to be funny.
No, again, it's just to provide some type of impediment for someone to access, I'm not talking about all of this, but I'm just...
You know, I think something that would be, you know, two feet high and three feet wide is a pretty sizable thing.
Yeah, okay. I think just for the record, just so we have an idea.
Yeah.
So, that...
Plus or minus?
When, when, you know, the town staff goes out, you don't see a...
It would be something that you wouldn't be able to handle by hand, something that's big enough so that you would probably...
Bill might be able to, but probably not.
Oh, yeah. No problem.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
That's it, thank you.
Peg?
No, I'm happy with it. I'm glad that you lowered the light. I noticed you at most with the light, lighting to 18 feet. I'm glad you put the building lights in front on timer, and I'm very happy about the fence along the side. So, I don't think I have any more problems, I don't have any issues. I think that's fine. Thank you.
Nathaniel?
I also like the reduction in the height of the pole lighting. Just, I can't remember if we discussed, or if this was addressed on the last time, this was before us. Are those pole lighting, are they on timers also?
Yes, they would also be on timers.
That's all, thank you.
Charles?
No, perfectly happy.
Okay. No, I like the improvements. Not gonna hold you to it. Guesstimate the electrical on the existing building, it'll take care of it about the same time on the other. On the other lights being done, or do you have...
We actually have contacted the electrician, they're running about three weeks out, so I would say probably within six weeks it'd probably be done.
Great, no, I think that's fine, okay. No, I have nothing else. This is a public hearing. I'm gonna open up to the public. Does the board have anything before I do that? Okay, anybody have any comments, questions about 310 Andover Street in the audience?
Nope.
Okay, so we're coming back to the board. Unless there's anything further, I'm looking for a motion to close the public, to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing of 310 Andover Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, now I'm looking for a motion unless there's anything else from the board.
This is to certify that a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on July 23, 2019, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted, we, the Danvers Planning Board, have been requested under Section 4 of the zoning bylaw for site plan approval for property located at 310 Andover Street, assessors map 39 lot 70B, do hereby vote to approve the application submitted by Ink Cups Now Corporation to construct a new warehouse and office building on the site of its existing headquarters. All changes are shown on the following plans, site plan, site plan development plans as described, containing eight sheets dated May 31, 2019, and revised through July 8, 2019, stamped by Scott Cameron, professional engineer. Further plans by Radner Design Associates with other landscape plans consisting of three sheets dated May 3, 2019, elevation plans prepared by Conley Construction Management consisting of two sheets dated May 31, 2019 as described. Supplemental documents, technical narrative in support of site plan review prepared by the Moran Cameron Group, Inc., dated May 31, 2019. This approval is subject to the following conditions. One, this approval is also subject to the attached list of general conditions approved by the Planning Board on January 27, 2004, as amended through February 27, 2018, which are incorporated in this certificate of action by reference. Two, once the field elevation of the proposed sewer inlet is verified and determined, all sewer invert information will be added to the plan, and a revised plan will be submitted to the Town of Danvers Planning Division prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Three, this project is required to conform to the Department of Environmental Protection Agency's stormwater management policy standards. Four, elevation of the existing drainage system located in Andover Street will be verified, and connection information from this project to this system is to be added to the plan set and submitted to the Town of Danvers Planning Division prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Five, this project is required to conform to the Town's stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw, and a stormwater permit must be obtained prior to construction. Six, approval of this site plan lapses within two years from the date of this decision if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those.
On the landscaping sheet, do you have the revised date? July 15, 7:15?
No. As amended, we're landscaping, oh, I'm sorry, 7:15, 19.
Amended, or?
Adding to that.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck. Thank you. Next, I'm going to, we're moving on to public hearings. I'm going to open the public hearing for Beaver Brook Woods. Notice is hereby given that Danvers Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Tumi Hearing Room, 1 Sylvan Street, on Tuesday, July 23, 2019, at 7:00 PM relative to a request for a definitive subdivision plan submitted by Beaver Brook Woods, LLC, for property located at 303 Maple Street, assessors map lot, assessors map 033 lot 023 303. 305 Maple Street, assessors map 033 lot 23, 023 305. 307 Maple Street, assessors map 333 lot 23 307. 309 Maple Street, assessors map 333 lot 23 309. 305 R Maple Street, assessors map 33 lot 24. 313 Maple Street, assessors map 33 lot 21. 315 Maple Street, assessors map 33 lot 20. 317 Maple Street, assessors map 33 lot 19. 325 Maple Street, assessors map 33 lot 17. 327 Maple Street, assessors map 33 lot 16. 333 Maple Street, assessors map 25 lot 87. And 333 R Maple Street, assessors map 25 lot 87A, containing approximately 6.34 acres of land pursuant to the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land, Town of Danvers Planning Board. Said property is located in the R2 zoning district. The applicant proposes to construct an eight-lot, single-family residence subdivision. Copies of the application and plans are on file and available for public review in the Land Use and Community Services Department, Danvers Town Hall. Mr. Sears James, Jim had to recuse himself from this particular meeting. So, you have three voting board members at this point in time. Nathaniel is an alternate and is for special permanent only, for voting powers.
Yes, I understand that. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Beaver Brook Woods, LLC. With me tonight is John Cole and Tony. On behalf of the applicant, also with me tonight is Scott Cameron, the Project Engineer, and Heather Monticup from GPI, our traffic consultant. And we are requesting approval of a definitive subdivision plan. This is a conventional subdivision plan that's been submitted to you, that will create an eight-lot residential subdivision on the properties located at 303-333 Maple Street, excluding 311 and 321. And the property is located in the R2 zoning district. All of the lots that are created under this subdivision plan conform fully to the dimensional and density requirements of the R2 zoning district, lot area, lot shape, lot frontage, use, and setback requirements being indicated on the plan that we can place a house within each of the conforming lots that will meet the setback requirements of the R2 zoning district. This is a property, a compilation of properties, that makes up about 6.3 acres, and you did see this before, during last winter, you saw this site, and in fact, we did a site view of this property in the early wintertime, when an application was presented to you for a cluster subdivision under the cluster section of the zoning bylaw. At the applicant's discretion, he sought permission and a special permit to proceed forward with the cluster subdivision at that time, and the board did in fact grant a special permit to allow a cluster subdivision to be filed here. However, during the course of that hearing process and working with the Engineering Department with the town for that process, it became apparent that the goals of a cluster subdivision were not being met with this particular, with the particular layout that the applicant had. There was not a real shrinking of the footprint of the development, and if there had been, there was a suggestion both in the board's decision, as well as in the Engineering Department's decision, that the road would have to remain private and would not be available for acceptance as a public way. There were some additional conditions also that rendered proceeding forward under a cluster subdivision layout not what the applicant wished to do, and it is the applicant's discretion as to whether they wish to proceed with a cluster or with a conventional subdivision. So, what you see before you is a conventional subdivision, again, creating lots that fully conform to the zoning bylaw, and the layout itself conforms substantially with the subdivision rules and regulations as normally seen in the Town of Danvers, which is going to give us a layout of eight residential house lots, again, that will be fully conforming and that will be used for purposes for which this lot is zoned in the Town of Danvers. You have an application package that we think is quite complete. You have the application, a project narrative was submitted with the application, as well as a technical report addressing stormwater management waivers requested, et cetera. You have a memorandum with regard to one of the waiver requests. You also have a traffic analysis prepared by GPI, as well as the plan set. At this point in time, we have received department comments from the Engineering Department, and certain aspects of the project were sent out for peer review by Meridian Engineering. We received those peer review comments yesterday, and we're ready to proceed forward with describing to you in more technical terms through Scott Cameron's presentation, as well as Heather Monticup's presentation, the layout of the site, and discussion of the waivers requested, and then we would be happy to take any questions that you have, and we'll be responding to the comments that we received, both from the town engineer, as well as the peer review comments, after we've had an opportunity to do that. So, I think that's it for the background of the project, and I'll turn it over to some.
Good evening. My name is Scott Cameron. I'm a professional engineer with the Moran Cameron Group, located at 66 Elm Street in Danvers, Massachusetts. My role in this project was as the surveyor and the civil engineer, so I'll be walking through most of the plan set here, the entirety of the plan set, which was prepared under my supervision. So, what I did is I took the black and white plans that you received in your set, and I simply added color to them. It's the same information here as is here, but I felt this was a little easier to describe what was going on. I'm happy to refer back to these plans at any point in time if you have specific questions, but for, you know, I guess clarity of my presentation, I was gonna refer to this plan here. So, this is the site plan that I added color to. This site plan has all the horizontal and vertical construction information for construction of the road, and just briefly for context, this is Maple Street shown here, this is the intersection of Bayberry Road, and Forest Street is just off the page over here. The proposed roadway is situated between 333 and 327, and approximately the footprint of an existing right-of-way that was created decades ago that runs through the site. So, at the intersection point here from the pavement, we extend 26-foot-wide pavement width in accordance with the subdivision regulations to a cul-de-sac at the end. The center of the cul-de-sac is 834 feet from the right-of-way line here. The project would include extending a sidewalk along one side of the road all the way out for pedestrian use along the roadway in accordance with the regulations, and everything else about the road, we designed as far as footprint-wise to meet the regulations. So, we showed the street trees coming up along the road, we are showing the grass strip in between those here, the trees we proposed on the right-of-way, and while we're talking about the trees, I will note, one of the Engineering Department comments was to eliminate the trees that are on the other side of a retaining wall we're proposing here. This is a wooded area, and as we get into the retaining wall discussion further on, I would like some board input on whether or not you want those trees or not, because that would be an additional waiver we would ask for, to eliminate those trees, should that be your determination. As far as the layout of the road, what we're talking about is coming in about 400 feet to a point where we get past a parcel of land that's owned by the Town of Danvers, that existing right-of-way passes over the town parcel, and that's where we're running the road. So, we have a right to use this right-of-way that was created, again, decades ago, and sort of passing through. This is really where the development footprint starts for the house lots. So, it's about 400 feet in from Maple Street, so, nothing until you get to this point. With the exception of, we're going to eliminate 333's curb cut on Maple Street, and we're gonna reconfigure the driveway to come in off a new subdivision road here. So, we're eliminating a curb cut and creating a new one, so it's kind of a one-for-one swap. As we come into the development, we have about 434 feet of road to provide frontage for the eight house lots. What I did do on this plan is we designed the lots schematically. Now, these are, I don't wanna say fictitious, but they're schematic house plans, and driveways and grading schemes demonstrate that we can build these lots. That's what's required, and, you know, and the regulations demonstrate that they're buildable, and all of them are, and I used very large house footprints as well, just to show that we, you know, we can fit a home on each of these lots. I expect that during, you know, in the future phase of this, as house plans are drawn up by architects and homeowners determine, you know, what they're gonna build in these lots, these will be fine-tuned, but the spirit is here to show that these can all be built. The frontage comes around, meeting the zoning, so every single lot complies with the zoning, half an acre. Lot areas are two oversized lots that exceed one acre in the back here, and that's really just remaining land of the property, there is, most of which is all wetland, so there's a wetland on the top part of the page here, and this land would all be preserved, being wetland, so there would be an existing buffer that wouldn't be touched through this whole area of the property, and that's along the Town of Danvers linear future potential railway easement on the back part of the property. The other infrastructure that we've built, that you see in the plan, this black line is a retaining wall. This would be constructed here mainly to minimize the grading into the wetland and minimize impacts to the wetlands. Part of what we're going to be permitting, parallel with this board, is filing notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. In going through alternatives, the retaining wall, although would come at greater expense than just filling in the wetlands, would minimize the footprint of that impact considerably, and so we propose a retaining wall along this edge, and I'll get into that momentarily. And also a small retaining wall, this is only two feet tall on this side, again, just to keep the footprint of the road as minimal. to keep the footprint of the road as minimal as possible coming through this corridor. The retained wall has a maximum height of nine feet, nine inches along this section. For those board members that were here, and I believe at least two tonight were part of the Whipple Hill process, which was a subdivision that is almost fully built out now. In comparison, the retaining walls, which are on both sides of that road, were 16 feet tall, just to give you some, if you had a chance to get down and see those. So considerably taller than what we're proposing here. The grades in the road are relatively flat, between 1.25% and 2% until you come all the way out until you get just about past the wall. So it's a very flat, easy drive into the site, at which point we increase the slope of the road up to a maximum 8% and then flatten it out in the cul-de-sac area here. This fully complies with the subdivision regulations. We're not requesting any waivers relief for the roadway grades. A new sewer system will be run in. Another reason why we have the wall here is the town engineer requested that we design a gravity sewer. And that's really what's driving the grade of the road here. Otherwise, we would have brought this down lower. But there's a great benefit to eliminating the alternative of doing a pump here on the municipal sewer system. So gravity, it gets into the chemistry of wastewater, but that was a request by the town engineer. So we did design a gravity sewer system that would connect back out to Maple Street and the municipal main here. We would also be constructing a new water main that would connect into the new water main that was built on Maple Street. It's actually on the other side of the road. There's plenty of capacity for the water in the sewer on the municipal main here. We would also be extending gas and electric into the development as well. Another big aspect of the design was the stormwater design. That's oftentimes the focal point of a lot of the work I'm doing as a civil engineer. In this case, no different. We're putting a lot of time and energy properly engineering designing the stormwater management system. This site has actually been one of the easier ones that I've designed in this community and really in the region, mainly because the soils in the site were very, they're very good. We did a series of test holes and I showed the locations around the property. And what we found was sand and gravel throughout the entire property. So it's very well draining. From a stormwater management perspective, this makes things a little easier for us to manage because we can put a lot of that water right back into the ground. Also, from a construction perspective, this makes it a lot easier to manage during construction because we're not dealing with, you know, fine sediments and clays that we've seen in some other projects in town. Sand and gravel, very easy to manage. It's larger grain size. It doesn't tend to flow out of the site. So it makes construction a lot easier, too. There's three drainage areas that are associated with this, all of which end up at Beaver Brook River, Beaver Brook, which is just off the property here. So this is the design point for the entire property. But we did look at it in a little smaller cross-section. So we have an area that's about this portion of the property. This goes down to the wetland here and we designed an infiltration pond. So this would be a surface pond that's situated here. And this manages the runoff from about this portion of the road going here. The next section of the road and house lots from this area up to this area, up to the throw of the cul-de-sac, is going to be managed by a subsurface infiltration system. So this will be below ground. We've done several of these. They result in a very easy to maintain, very aesthetic stormwater management option. These are concrete tanks meeting, you know, the engineering department's longstanding requirement that we use concrete for all drainage infrastructure. So these would be concrete galley tanks. And we've put several of these systems in town on other subdivisions. And then the third area, so this would outlet again to the wetland. And then the third area is really just the top portion of the property, which can drains down to the wetland in Beaver Brook. And there'll be another underground system in the center of the cul-de-sac. So these again would be concrete tanks in the center of the cul-de-sac. So we're being very efficient with the use of the land, minimizing, you know, doing larger basins in other areas that are unsightly, hard to maintain, and homeowners typically don't like them. So these are underground systems which will meet the stormwater management requirements to mitigate the post-development stormwater runoff. Finally, on each of the house lots, as is customary for our designs, we are evaluating the house lot development in addition to the road. So we've done one comprehensive stormwater design. And what we do in the house lots, because again, I mentioned these can vary a little bit as we get into actual architectural plans. What we designed is drywells that we've oversized for a very conservative footprint for a large house, a large driveway, pools, patios, everything that homeowners like to put on their properties. We put drywalls in each of these lots. And what's great about these is if they do do something different or do something bigger, we can add another drywall on. We can always adjust that. But these have all been added on each of the house lots to kind of manage what we anticipate for the house development. The other great thing about that is we're spreading out the stormwater. So it's going into the ground throughout the entire property, mimicking what's happening now with just the water running on the property. I will note in the plan set, which we have a sheet index here for all the drawings, I've been talking mostly to the site plan, which you can find on page sheet five of the plan set. You will also find the lotting plan. The lotting plan has all your geometric information for the lots. Okay? These are property lines. They show existing homes. As part of this, we are reconfiguring all the existing dwellings that are part of the application along Maple Street. Each and every single one of these lots that are going to remain, these are the homeowners, and I believe many of them are here tonight, they're all going to be bringing their lots either into conformance with the zoning bylaw or close to it. Most of these lots are irregular in shape. They have deficiencies in area or frontage, with the exception of frontage. But we're bringing these all into conformance with a lot of shape. So the land gets a lot more usable for everybody. Instead of having these long kind of tails that go back, they'll have a much, much better lot when it's done. The other thing about this, too, is because there's a compilation of a lot of old surveys here, we've resolved a lot of the issues with the, you know, 100 years of, you know, setting monuments and writing out deeds. So there's a lot of, I guess, title-related things we've cleaned up through this on all the existing homes. And all those are staying on Maple Street. Another notable plan in the set is the profile. This kind of gives you the vertical cross-section of the road. And if you're, I know some of you are accustomed to seeing these, but the profile is exaggerated vertically. So when you're seeing this in plan, it looks like a ski slope coming up here. This is exaggerated four times vertically. And that's just to make it easier to read. So if we did it one-to-one, when you're trying to build this out, you just can't see it. So this is a customary exaggeration of the vertical profile. 8% grade is a handicap rate, by the way. So that's what we're talking about for a maximum slope in the road. Lastly, I want to pay your attention to, we did actually engage a wall manufacturer. It's the same manufacturer that has installed the walls on two other recent subdivisions in town. They're a concrete modular wall option. They're gravity walls, so there's no tiebacks. Again, the maximum height is nine feet, nine inches. So it's under even the structural requirement where we need to have it structurally engineered, although a building permit could be required for this. But this is the profile of the wall. The way these work is on the bottom, you put a large block and that's kind of your base block. They sit on gravel. And then you come up, you do a smaller block, you come up, you do a smaller block, and you stack together like Legos. And you can go to, you know, again, a couple of the recent subdivisions, which are either under construction or complete, have the same wall product here. So that profile's on the plan. We did also provide some cross-sections here to see what that looks like at various stages through the road. I can go through the waivers now, if you like, that we've requested?
Please.
So the waivers are found on sheet two, and they're the same that were in the memo that was in your application package. Now, many of these are waivers that are really just modernizing things, some of the regulations written in the 70s. We just do things a little different today as technologies and techniques have improved in construction. So the first waiver we're requesting is for the road length. In my initial presentation, I indicated that the 834 feet of road is what we're requesting, where the maximum length is 600 feet. Now, I did also mention that we're not really starting the house development until 400 feet in. So really, the actual usable part of this road is only 434 feet, but we are building 400 feet to get to that part. And this would remain untouched or unused, so just frontage against woods. So as far as emergency vehicle access, this fully meets the fire truck turning movements. And as far as water supply, which is the other concern with that end road length, because this is a brand-new water main in Maple Street, in conversations with the engineering division, there's no concerns here about pressure or flow. It's a very, very good water supply. It's a low point in the system as opposed to some of the other ones that have been high points. So this is down low in the system, so pressure is much better. And I believe the engineering department in their memorandum did support this waiver. The second waiver requesting is not to install a fire alarm. It's really a fire department matter. These haven't really been used in quite a long time with technology improvements, with cell phones and things. You don't need pull boxes anymore. So we requested a waiver not to install that, which the fire department has supported in past applications. Third waiver requesting is to reduce our curbing, which is, it's called a Cape Cod berm typically, but the Danvers cross-section is for a two-foot-wide berm that's six inches tall. And we don't really build those anymore. So what we're requesting is to go to a modern Cape Cod berm, which is 12 inches wide and four inches tall. This reduced width goes right into the landscape buffer. So we're cutting out a foot of pavement on each side of the road for the 800 feet of the road. So it's just, it's significant. And this has been another waiver that has been approved and endorsed by the engineering department in the planning board in past subdivisions. The fourth is requesting installation of the sidewalk prior to setting bounds. The concern here is that oftentimes the sidewalk sits on the edge of the right of way, is built and it gets outside of the right of way. However, if we put the bounds in first, what happens is the bounds get paved over, they get damaged, we end up having to rip them up, resetting them, and now we've got to cut the sidewalk. So what is better, and what we've done in the past and it's noted on the plan here, is that prior to building the sidewalk, what we'll do is we'll stake out the edge of the right of way. So we'd be in polls to make sure it's built in the right spot. We'll put the binder of the sidewalk down, we'll set the granite bounds, you know, where you do have to cut out a little bit of the binder, and then we'll do the finish coat of pavement. So when it's done, you've got a nice clean sidewalk without cuts and the bounds are nice and flush with it. So that just ensures a better product at the end of the project. So the next waiver, we're requesting allow two feet of cover over the drainage pipes. The engineering department has gone along with this. They're requesting that we use a ductile iron pipe, which has a stronger bearing capacity than the concrete. So again, we ruled that the engineering department was okay as long as we used ductile iron pipe. That is outlined on the plans. Again, this is a waiver to minimize fill and, you know, unnecessary fill, really. So reducing the elevation of the road, reducing fill, reducing maintenance requirements down the road. We haven't really done four feet of cover over pipes in quite a while. Two feet, two, two and a half feet is really what we've done, at least since I've been in practice. So it's just kind of an older standard that we don't really do anymore. The next waiver, again, is for sewer pipe. So the sewer pipe requires five feet of cover. We're requesting a minimum of three feet of cover. And again, this is to avoid a pump, make sure we can get this sewer out to Maple Street using gravity. So we're requesting three feet of cover over the pipe. And that section really only applies towards the end here. And the engineering department has again agreed to that, provided we use a different pipe material than the PVC. The last waiver here is a waiver to reduce the intersection separation. This kind of came up during, we're in before you for the special permit. We presented an alternative that shows a no waiver condition for this. I did bring that with me, I can show you. But effectively, if we were to hold 300 feet from Forest Street to the intersection here, we can meet that, we can do that, but we end up with a road that's coming in at a 73-degree angle. That's fine, we can meet the regulations. However, from a practicality, from a traffic, you know, Heather will talk about this momentarily, it's not, it's just not good practice. So what we propose is a waiver to reduce that down to 245 feet. Now, intersection separation and site distance, the reason why that's in there is for good reason. We're looking at the speed in the roads, we're looking at site distance, we're looking at are there any issues with reducing that down? You know, the benefit of making a normal 90-degree intersection versus an angled intersection. And the turning movements are easier getting in and out of this, both, you know, as far as the time it takes just to make that turn in rather than have to make more of a hairpin. And there's plenty of site distance. We exceed it in all directions. Heather's going to get into that in a little bit. But this waiver, we felt was just, it was in the public interest to do that. It's going to make things safer on the road for people on the road, also people exiting to get on and off of that road because of site distance there, because, you know, you don't have any issues with that interface between that road. And it's not close enough where it's, say, 50 feet, where we get into a kind of a street jog situation where cars are trying to zig across it because it kind of looks like an intersection. It's not, it's plenty far apart where people are going to take a right turn, they'll get up to speed, and then if they are taking a left, they'll go down Forest Street. So we did request that waiver, the engineering division in their memo. I did also agree that that was a favorable waiver to approve, and they agreed to that. So I think Heather Montecup has done some traffic study here.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Heather Monacup with Grimmon Peterson, and we are the traffic engineers for the proposed project. Back in October, October 23rd, actually, we have a trip generation and site access letter that was prepared for the project when it was going through the cluster special permit. Since that time, we have met with town staff engineering on March 27th and come up with a traffic scope for a traffic impact and access assessment that was submitted and dated May 21st, 2019. So it was submitted with your packages. In that traffic impact and access assessment, we looked at existing conditions in the 2019. We did traffic counts on Maple Street, looked at vehicle speeds. The town wanted us to go out 10 years for a future condition. So we looked at 2029 conditions along Maple Street at the subdivision roadway. So that included traffic growth, any background developments in the area that are approved or not yet built, and also any planned roadway improvements. As mentioned, the biggest thing about this development, again, not a real high-traffic generator site, but is site distance. You know, we are on a curve, we have Forest Street over there, so we did go out, we measured site distances. As Scott had mentioned, we exceed all the minimum and desirable site distance requirements as set forth by ASHTO. So we are well over what we need to avoid a collision at this roadway. As far as the waiver for the minimum distance between intersections, we're talking, if it did come in at an angle, we're talking about 55 more feet. So we're not, we're not talking about hundreds of feet just with this angle that we're asking for the, for the relief on. If the, if the angle of the driveway wasn't at that 73 degrees, you know, when you're looking right, you'd be turning your head much more than 45 degrees. So it's just not accommodating for a motorist. You know, I'm sure there's roadways that can do it. But ASHTO says that in stop-controlled intersections, such as this one, where the subdivision road will be under stop control, you really should make it 90 degrees wherever practical. And it really shouldn't intersect less than 75 degrees. So therefore, we are in full support of the 90-degree intersection with Maple Street. You know, we think the waiver should be granted, and it is in the best interest of the public. Not only did the engineering department agree with that, but also the peer review Meridian, they said because site distances are met out there, they didn't see an issue with granting, with granting that waiver. So for trip generation for this site, what we did was we looked at vehicles coming in and out of the subdivision roadway. So as Scott had mentioned earlier, the driveway for 333 Maple Street will be closed and moved over here on the subdivision road. So the trip generation numbers in our traffic impact and, in our traffic impact assessment includes traffic volumes for nine homes, just so that you know, in case there was any confusion. So that's 11 vehicles during the AM peak hour and 10 vehicle trips during the PM peak hour. In the AM, we're expecting three vehicles to enter, eight vehicles to leave. In the PM, six vehicles to enter and four vehicles to leave. Remember, this is just during one peak hour. You know, not all, you know, if there's two cars in each house, not all 16 come in and go at all the same time. That's why the numbers don't, you know, don't jive. That's what everyone thinks. Well, everyone's going to be leaving at the same time. They don't, there's different work schedules, things like that. These traffic, these traffic numbers are from the ITE Trip Generation Manual for Single-Family Detached Housing. And there's been studies done that show that these are accurate, you know, with data and whatnot. So once you take those trips and distribute them on the roadway, as you can imagine, you know, people, especially during the work week headed towards, you know, 95 Route 1, you're basically looking at traffic volume increases in either direction, anywhere between three to eight vehicle trips. So that's about one additional vehicle going by every seven and a half to 20 minutes. So that is not a dramatic increase in traffic. We expect it to have negligible impacts on Maple Street. We did run capacity and queue analysis at the intersection. The Maple Street movements are at acceptable levels. And of course, the subdivision roadway leaving does have long delays during the peak periods, as expected, with the volume of traffic on Maple Street. But the queuing is expected to be just one vehicle or less during, over that hour, and volume to capacity ratios, it's like a percentage of how much capacity is left, is well below 1.0. So if you can imagine 1.0 is 100% capacity, we're talking about VC ratios of .09, so 9%. So, you know, plenty of capacity to, to accommodate the traffic coming in and out of the site. Because of the negligible impacts on Maple Street at this intersection where all the traffic is going in and out, we can only assume that the impacts at Bayberry and at Forest would also be negligible. So although we didn't do capacity and queue analysis at those intersections, we're talking about three, three cars in this direction and seven cars in that direction driving by, so it's supposed to be, expected to be negligible impacts at those locations. I know at the first engineering letter, that's what they had mentioned, so, about impacts at those locations. So that's really all I have for traffic.
Okay. I think that is our presentation. We will be happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to have any staff comments before we proceed to the board.
All right, just a couple of questions. When were you planning on filing with the council?
We're preparing.
How far out, you know?
Yep. So, because this one does involve, we're actually going to change it up a little bit from how we've done in the past. We've usually just done the road and then come back on a lot-by-lot basis afterwards. In this case, we're going to do the road, and we're actually going to permit, there's three lots in jurisdiction here with a notice of intent, and one that is really more of a request for determination, because it's going to be on the other side of a road and on the outside edges of the buffer zone. So we're going to file actually four notices of intent and a request for determination. We're trying to get that ready for next week, to file to be on the next meeting. The commission canceled their August 8th meeting, so we're trying to get in for, I believe, the 22nd.
22nd.
Is that meeting. And we're working with LEC Environmental.
Okay.
On the planting plan, so I'm hoping to have something in the next couple of days to.
Okay, yeah.
Come in with.
Sounds good. The only other question that I have before we go on, just for verification, I know you had something at some point the last time, maybe you could get it to me, but the, as you mentioned, the right-of-way was laid out decades ago. The portion to be extinguished at the tail end of the subdivision, I understand the majority landholder will be the applicant if it goes forward, but who has rights to the remainder of that right-of-way?
We'll provide that information to you.
Yeah, you don't need to answer now, just, if you could get it to me, that'd be great. That was it.
Okay. I'm going to put it out to the board. Peg?
Yep. Wow, I didn't expect to see you back here. I thought it was a cluster subdivision. Can you just explain again to me why you didn't consider, or why it wasn't considered a cluster subdivision that we approved? Or, I, I'm trying to remember your words, I can't remember your words exactly. Maybe I'm misinterpreting.
Not to cut in front, that, that approval still stands, actually.
Yes.
Regardless of what we do here.
I know, I understand that. But I just, I'm just curious as to why the change, because we spent a lot of time.
Absolutely.
And I thought that what you had put together was doing just what a subdivision, cluster subdivision should do, that was lessening the impacts, mitigating the impact on the surrounding area. And I'm just, I'm very surprised that you're back here again with the definitive subdivision, so.
Well, the cluster subdivision process is a two-step process, as you know. The first step is getting a special permit to allow the applicant to then bring a definitive subdivision plan to you, that's a cluster form. We went through the process of getting the special permit, which is permission to then proceed to the definitive layout stage. And going through that process, what we had originally on the original submission for the cluster subdivision, we had a narrower road, we were asked, we were complying with what's permitted under a cluster subdivision, but in meeting with engineering staff and going through the process, the waivers of the standard conventional subdivision were not going to be granted and then supported to have a, a public street acceptance. So, and your decision, your decision on the special permit reflects that. If we had proceeded forward with the, with the cluster subdivision with the narrower roadway layout, that road must remain private, not a public way. That was a, a significant negative.
Okay.
Aspect. Other aspects that were in the special permit decision had to do with requiring the developer to build and maintain the connection to the rail trail. As part of our presentation and what we presented to the open space committee, and I believe you were part of that meeting, was we would provide an easement, and then we were asked to provide the design, and then the decision resulted in an actual construction, which was not part of what the developer had anticipated doing. There was a requirement in the special permit for the cluster to do a site assessment, an environmental site assessment of the open space that would be remaining open on land that quite honestly has been vacant. That was not a condition that we anticipated and adds additional cost. So looking at the benefits, and that's what you, you weigh as a developer on a cluster subdivision, what's the benefit that you're, you're getting out of the development? Does it lay out better? It ends up looking as a layout quite similar to, to a conventional, but you have much smaller lots, and that impacts the viability of the project. We were going to end up with a road that had to remain private, and that's a significant impact on the value of the development. And then there were additional costs associated with the open space going forward. So for all of those reasons, when the developer looked at this, does it make sense to do conventional? Does it make sense to do the cluster? The benefits of doing the cluster were not there. So it's the developer's choice, of course, whether you do cluster or whether you do a conventional subdivision. And you'll remember also, I, I think the first hearing that we had on the cluster, there were certainly members of the board and members of the audience who didn't want cluster. They wanted the bigger lots and the big, and the standard layout. So it's all a balancing, when it comes down to it, but the benefits of shrinking the footprint in were not there by the time you added in the conditions and what resulted from the review process for the cluster. So, yes, we got permission to proceed forward with a cluster, but we chose to do a conventional. And that's what we have here. Same number of lots, of course, and a very similar type of layout. But this will be a street that meets subdivision rules and regulations and would be accepted as a public way ultimately.
Okay. I do know that you have a right to come in and do a definitive, and I do know that the clusters of special permits still approved. There's a lot of unanswered questions, excuse me, I believe, so, I mean, I think you're going to be back here again to, to resolve some of the other unanswered questions. I will tell you that I'm disappointed if I don't see at least an easement to the rail trail. I'd like to see something down there. See, the fencing, you've got, you're going to be fencing that, that retaining wall because it's over four feet high, right? So you will have fencing on that. I don't know, I think, I think Mr. Chairman, I just would like to wait and see what else comes out that they're doing, but I would want it noted that I still want that connection to the rail trail, and I am, well, I'm not disappointed, I know it's the developer's choice, but I thought unless the footprint of the, I mean, unless the width of the roadway was a good idea for impact of the area. So by shrinking it and having the clusters on it would be good. I can see where you want it to be at public street, but are the cluster zones, do we have all, they all meet the public, with the public streets, choke farm?
I don't think it's required.
It's not required?
But it does give the applicant more of a purview.
Yeah.
To play with the width of the road, to allow them to make smaller units, smaller housing.
Well, I guess that's all I really have for now. I want to see what the rest of the board feels, I want to see what the audience feels, the people surrounding the area, and then, you know, we'll move on from there.
Okay.
Okay. We, we will be submitting responses, as I said, beginning to the department comments, which were not, from our standpoint, particularly significant, so we're, we'll be able to respond to all of those.
Nathaniel?
I have a question about the traffic study, the, on 62, coming eastbound. Someone makes a left to get into that road, is there plenty of room for traffic if they have to wait for oncoming cars, for traffic that's going behind them in the same direction to get by them on the right?
Sorry, if you're going to respond, do you mind just?
I will, sorry.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yep, no problem. The, I, it is only one lane in each direction, but there is bicycle lane, like, it's not bicycle lanes, but it's five-foot shoulders out there, so I would imagine that someone could squeeze by, but I could find a definitive answer to that question.
The reason I think is just, what is it, Spring Street or Nichols, that is the left that goes up to the prep before that, if you're coming from that direction?
From this direction?
No, the other way, coming the other way.
Yeah, okay.
I can't even remember when they put that left lane on, left lane, designated left lane in, but wow, that, that makes it so much easier and.
It was very recent, and that was done in association with the expansion, significant expansion of St. John's Prep.
Okay.
The additional build, building and adding the middle school and all of that, that was part of that.
Was it, yeah.
There was a donation for.
I mean.
Not expecting that there'd be a left and only lane for that road, because it's not as, going to be left to traffic. I was just thinking, that spot in that road, I can't picture whether that's a point where it's a choke point or not. So anyway, that's a concern that I have, and just wanted to raise that.
I'll make a note of it and can come back with a, a better answer.
The, the other issue, which has nothing to do with traffic, Peg, when you mentioned an easement to the rail trail, that light blue strip of land that runs, is that, that's kind of Danvers land, is that correct? Was that land, I think, when we did the walkthrough in the winter, that was like a tax-taking at some point, was that right? I know that the layout of the land and the design of the road to accommodate a gravity-fed sewer renders the, putting a, an easement to the rail trail there possibly, I don't know what the word would be, but difficult probably, but it almost seems like it would make perfect sense as, on a, on a flat, in a flat world, to have an easement there.
On the town line?
On the town line, because it goes right up to the rail trail, right?
Doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I know, but because of the height of, of the retaining wall, I know that would create probably some serious difficulties, but that kind of also brings me to what was my, going to be my original point. It just, I don't even know how to express how I feel about it, because I'm not sure how I do feel about it, but laying a, a right-of-way that existed there, I'm sure no one ever anticipated it bisecting like town land, because it becomes this barrier, right? So you have, once, if the road was laid out as planned with, as you described it, with a retaining wall of one height on the left, right, as the road curves, closer to Beaver Brook and the rail trail, and then another retaining wall also, just that whole thing becomes a wall separating town land on both sides, which, I know, it doesn't really get much use anyway, if any, it's just woods that really nobody owns, but I just wanted to just bring those two things up, just to lay them out there. That's all. I don't even, I don't even have a question about it.
I'm, I'm just going to throw my two cents in on it. That has a long and winding history, that area of town, where there was some unusual divisions of land in that section off of 62, but I think it was originally with the idea coming off of Spring Street, before all the houses were built back like in the 60s or 70s. And that's kind of where the easement came from.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not trying to speak out of turn, I got a brief look at the original site plan back before there were houses along all that area, and that's, they had it all chopped up in terms of different land uses. But that was, like I said, that was back in the 60s or 70s. And then you start putting other houses and things to help different. That's, that's the reason where it becomes a weird situation. Not that that makes it any better, just that's, like I said, it's got a weird history, like most of town. Most of town has, when you get into zoning, a lot of town has some unusual changes that have happened over the course of the last, last 40 years or so, or more. Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay. Charles?
Yeah, there was a lot to take in. I do have a question, actually, I think probably for staff, about, from the fire department saying that they cannot approve the application until a street name has been submitted? Is that, do you think the only thing holding that back, or why does it ride on that?
Oh, you, you mean their approval? Technically, they don't approve anything that you do, so it's merely just they're not going to be satisfied, so the planning board should take that into account. That being said, I need to sit down with the fire division and understand better what their expectations are for street naming and the town itself. I'll get back to you, let you know what I find.
Can I chime in here just for a second and tell you what my understanding is, as to what the fire department is concerned about, is that when construction begins, and if there is an emergency, they want to have a name that they know, so that somebody calls up and says, I'm on lot whatever, on a street, there's a street name, and, and it's well identified, and, and we work with the fire department in making sure that lots are identified before construction starts and this, and a street name is put up and that kind of thing, even if it's a temporary type of sign, so that they, they do that in. In Danvers, typically, the developer selects the street name and works with Captain Brooks to make, and the chief to make sure that there's not a name that's similar. Some towns have lists of, of names that they like you to use. In Danvers, we haven't come up with a name yet that we've presented, but that's all part of the process, we don't have any problem with that condition.
Yeah, I think I, I don't have any concerns that haven't already been voiced, so I don't really have much to add, unfortunately.
I just have one thing, and this is going to be through David, the trees on the outside of the retaining wall.
Sure.
I'm not sure I like them, but I didn't see anything about the trees associated with any of the, yeah.
Yeah. I think, again, I can check with the engineering, obviously, the concern is the trees themselves, not initially, but at some point undermining the structural ability of the retaining wall. I'd assume, also, that being said, just given where they are and looking at them, there's probably going to be five to six that aren't really ever going to get started, and will probably wither and dump into the wetland. I'm just judging you, Scott, you can chime in if you want, but given the fact that they're in the wetland itself, I don't think that they're going to take.
Well, I disagree with actually would select a tree that would survive there, but the wetland line is a little deceiving, and I know we walked it in the wintertime when we went out with everybody, but I do recall, we stopped down in this area and there was a larger tree that had come down, that was around the edge of the wetland, right? So that was a large pine tree that typically likes drier conditions, but they will grow in wetlands. The issue is, the water table is higher here, but when you walk through that area, it doesn't look like a wetland. I was actually amazed when I saw how far up this was flagged. The water table's just close enough where we have to call it a wetland, but it's really functioning as an, you know, it, it's really kind of this upland, it has one of the indicators, a couple of the plants are growing in there, but you really go further out, so where we're putting this wall is in that area that doesn't look like a wetland. You go, you go further out, you get into the area, it is, you can see it, it's wet, it's muddy, you can see, you can see a very distinct change, the gray drops down a couple of feet. So along this area, I don't disagree with the town engineer's request to not put those trees there, I can understand the concern, if one of these blows over, you know, the roots would turn up into that wall, so I can see that concern. We would try to put a tree that would thrive in the, in a wetter condition, but they do typically have shallow root systems when it's wet, so I think that would be a good, a good waiver to consider, especially considering that really you're looking into a wooded buffer here, right? So we're putting trees up against an existing forest area, this, it's not like we're putting trees in this area where it's along the front edge of the lot, so you don't just have road into lawn and you're trying to break that up with shade trees. This is really through this whole area from, really on this side along the edge of this whole area from, really on this side along the edge of, of three twenty-seven, all the way up through here to the edge of the, the town parcel, and then from the detention pond all the way back here, up until this point, you have wooded habitat, and actually, we'll, we will be restoring some of the habitat in this area as well, uh, through the conservation process, so some, some wetland plants and trunks will be going back into this area already as part of that process, so. I, I don't disagree with the town engineer, I think there's limited, limited value to put in those trees there.
Uh, my first, um, idea is to reduce the number of trees there, um, I don't know if Conservation Commission in the past has commented on any kind of plantings in these kinds of situations where they're so close to a retaining wall, but my personal, my first viewpoint on that is, where if this is gonna be a public way, the town's responsible for that retaining wall if something happens, so I don't think we should be doing anything, approving any kind of site that would possibly affect that retaining wall, so if we could get some better comments either from staff about that.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, from engineering or, I don't know if there's anything that, I don't know if there's anything like the Conservation's come up with anything like this.
Check, check, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they have, I don't think they have, I can't think of anything like this before, uh, in terms of the location of the trees versus the wetland and how it changes the structure of it over. The other thing is, can we get a bit more of a definitive answer from the engineers? Because some of the notes I read, when we talk about the, um, water issue with the street length, what I was reading wasn't coming up exactly with what the applicant was saying.
Okay, I can definitely get the engineers to elaborate, our town engineers to elaborate further on their...
Right, I don't doubt what he's saying, because I know we've approved longer streets, and I know that the usable land that they're talking about is four twenty-three, as opposed to eight, is it eight twenty-three versus four twenty-three? Eight thirty-four, excuse me, but that doesn't mean the road doesn't exist and that the water still has to go that way.
Yep, point taken.
So...
I will get further clarification from them.
Yeah, those are the two things that I'm concerned with.
Okay.
Um, before I throw it out to the audience, does the board have any other comments they wanna ask about?
Um, I just wanted to ask staff about Conservation Commission, because I, I'm looking at it right now, I can't find it in the MAI report, but I thought I saw something that they said before we, um, approve, we should have comments through the Conservation Commission, should look, they were concerned about Conservation approving the roadway, and it may change for us if we approve this first.
Sure, so, so I spoke with Meridian on the phone, again, I, I think I said I haven't necessarily had a chance to dive into their comments, um, their concern was, and I think this is valid for any time there's a joint filing between the two boards, is that there's a possibility, and in this case, since there's extensive work in and near the wetlands, that any decision or even informal comments that the Conservation Commission may make may change the layout of the road, or may change stormwater utilities going forward, which would then change the planning board's plans. That's always a concern, um, the applicants, in my opinion, somewhat address that if they do in fact file, next week we'll be able to hear what the Conservation Commission has to say, again, they're most likely won't have a decision at that date, so we don't want to know definitively, but at least we can get informal comments on how the Conservation Commission feels, one way or the other.
Okay, and I know that in the past, we had mentioned we would, couldn't, really couldn't wait for Conservation to make a decision on, on other, um, projects that we were looking at, but I don't know if we've had this, any that have been this close to the wetland.
Yeah, I, I can't think of any, they might have changed lot sizes and things like that, but I don't think anything that might have affected a roadway.
Yeah, not, not like this.
Yeah, I haven't seen, or I can't think of one.
Yeah, if I could, the, the Whipple Hill subdivision actually was going through a lot, it was considerably more wetland filled than this project, this is kind of a glancing blow, so I would say, you know...
What, they built a, didn't they build a culvert? Didn't they build a culvert?
Right, but it, that's still all impact, that's still all considered alteration, so the fact that there's a culvert, that's just to maintain hydraulic connection across that, or through that wetland, we're doing the same here, we're actually including...
The culvert was basically staying in the same place, right, where this could possibly change.
No, I, I, yeah, I would consider that one significantly larger impact than, than this, and, and again, this is on that fringe area where there's minimal impact to, to the actual wet ecosystem that, that's functioning as a wetland, this is really in that marginal section, but, um, yeah, we do, we do hope to meet with them.
But I think to your point, Peg, every site's different, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else from the board before I bring it out to the audience? Go ahead, Charles.
Um, when we talked about the wetlands, I just remembered, excuse me, remembered, this is really more for you, Scott, um, the first time that this had come before the board, I remember you saying that you were surprised that the, the wetland designation was out as far as it was because it was really dry back there, and one of the abutters mentioned that you should see it in the spring, or like during the monsoon season. Given the fairly wet spring that we had, and the recent rains that we've had, have you been back down there to check in, or...
Yeah, I, I can't say I've been out there during one of these deluges, but I've been out there extensively in all sorts of weather at all times of the year, I've been working on this, I haven't lived there, there's a lot of some people here, but I've been working on it for three and a half years, I've spent quite a bit of time out there, I haven't, you know, the way this is engineered, we're not impacting, you know, as far as flood capacity, we are accommodating that, you know, there is a little bit of, you know, the area that is considered floodplain, we are accommodating that with the design of the road, so there, we're actually creating more capacity and, and volume in this wetland than what is there now, and that's all through the Conservation Commission per view, that'll be part of our application with them, um, but, uh, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to stamp anything if I was, I was impacting, you know, you know, a floodway or a wetland, you know, not properly mitigating for it.
Right.
Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing, um, please raise your hand, and we ask that you use the podium and give us your name. Anyone from the audience have any questions, comments? Please feel free, give us, please, raise your hand. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Doug and Town Meeting Member Precinct One, uh, just a couple of, uh, comments. First, I'd just like to say that I'm, it's just concerning to see that a full complement of the board is not considering this application, that there's only three voting members. Uh, the first item I'd like to just, uh, talk about is the roadway, so I think originally at the last application was approval for forty-two feet wide, is, uh, what, what's the current width proposed for the roadway?
I believe it's fifty feet.
For the right, the right-of-way, not the, not the paved way, just for...
Yeah, the right-of-way, not necessarily asphalt.
That includes, yeah, that includes all the area, right?
Right, and for, uh, that one sliver there, the different color, that's three twenty-one R maple, which is owned by the town, what is the permissible width of the easement through that property? Is that, have, has the town looked into, uh, the legal standing for allowing the roadway to traverse that property?
I haven't actually looked at it specifically, but I would, I'm gonna leave this to staff, but I would imagine they would allow for a, a normal width road to be able to go through, because it wouldn't make sense for them to not allow a roadway that's usable for an easement.
Well, it might not make sense, but I'm just asking if it's been, uh, town council or someone, uh, with that type of background has looked at the...
Yep, so the, the right-of-way width itself is consistent with the rest of the right-of-way that's being made, that's fifty feet wide, um, but in terms of, if, it sounds like you're asking more of rights and who has the rights, if anyone, to cross the town land, or is that not...
If you look at the registry of deeds, the easement isn't clear-cut for, that property was taken, uh, for back taxes.
Sure.
And, uh, just concerned that, because that, that roadway effectively makes this three twenty-one R worthless, especially with the retaining wall, so it really has no value other than perhaps a, a pathway down to the proposed rail trail, um, just wanted to point that out. Um, we talk about the retaining wall, so I think the town had some concerns with that in the past, I heard that it was going to be a, a little less than ten feet tall, and it sounds like, uh, from what I heard the chairman say, that the town will own that if the roadway is accepted as a public way, then the town will take ownership of the retaining wall and be required to, uh, to maintain it, so I heard earlier that the soils there, uh, the water table is very high in that area, and, uh, the footing for that retaining wall sound like just gravel, not necessarily, uh, below grade, just kind of like resting on the surface, so that sounds to me that would be somewhat unstable, so that, that's a concern, I would ask that the town kind of take a closer look at that, the town engineer. The stormwater treatment, we often hear projects where they have, when there's significant runoff, that there's like, uh, like catch basins or cisterns or some type of, uh, pond, retaining ponds that, where the water can be treated before it's released into the, the waterway that's at the edge of the property, is that, I didn't really hear any type of filtration system being mentioned, just, just kind of control of flow, is that something that's been considered, uh, having a filtration system to catch any debris from the road, from the roadway?
I'll put that out to the applicant if you wouldn't mind just reiterating.
Wouldn't be a good hearing without talking about the stormwater, um, we're all very concerned about it these days, and for good reason, right? Um, yeah, so, I, I did mention some terms, infiltration basin and infiltration, uh, system, subsurface infiltration system, what that word infiltration or retention means is that it's holding the water and putting it into the ground, so they're designed to infiltrate into the ground, so as far as getting the, the surface water that's coming down back in the ground, that's what these are designed for, and it's sand and gravel, so these will be very rapidly drained, uh, and because of that, because of the speed at which it goes in the ground, we are putting more treatment than normal, because, you know, we get treatment with a slower draining through the ground, because actually the soil and the bacteria actually provide some treatment of that, when it's rapid, we provide more pre-treatment, so in this case, um, I'm not gonna speak for the town sweeping of roads, but a sweeping plan would be your first line of defense if it were go-to-public road. Structurally, what we will have are deep sump catch basins with hoods, so you have a sump that's four feet below the end of the pipe, that's gonna trap any, uh, sediments or sands or solids, there can be organic material, leaves that get in there that sink down, and then the hood over the outlet prevents anything that's floating on the surface, any oils, from getting out to the pipe, so it functions similar to how a septic system works, we have the solids in the bottom and the oils in the top, and that's, that's gonna be your first kind of polishing of the stormwater. The second set of protection in renovation is, uh, called a hydrodynamic separator, so this is like a, a, a catch basin plus, so now the water's going through this system that, uh, has a trap in it, and it, the water circulates around, and it, it uses hydro, you know, gravity through a hydrodynamic circulation to further separate out oils and sands and grit and particles from the stormwater, and that provides up to ninety percent, uh, removal of pollutants in the stormwater, which are mostly around the solids, it's mostly pollutants that are stuck to sand, that's where the most, most of it occurs, and then the final form of treatment, so that gives you a lot of pre-treatment before it even gets into the infiltration basin, so we're, we're very clean coming into the point where we're putting it back into groundwater, and at that point, we're getting additional treatment in these systems through the, the infiltration of the water into the ground, so these, these provide the higher level of treatment for rapidly drained soil, which is following the MasDEP stormwater handbook requirements, um, so yes, we're, we're providing a lot of treatment of the water.
So just for clarification through you, Mr. Chairman, it sounds as if, uh, the, the stormwater will be kept on-site and, and, uh, the effort will be made to reintroduce it into, into the ground, so, uh, my concern would be that the stormwater is actually funneled off-site into the town's stormwater system where there are, you know, drains along the side of the road, so, um, is that fair, fair to say that the stormwater for the most, in, in most sense, would be kept on-site as, as much as possible?
Uh, it's fair to say it would be kept on-site as much as possible, the site is also not tributary to any municipal system, this goes towards eventually Beaver Brook, so it eventually makes its way down to, uh, dams, uh, near DPW, I believe is where that all ends up, but yes, there, the way the, the math works is we're actually putting, we're trying to get more water into the ground and hold it on the site, uh, so that we are reducing flow, in this case, uh, getting the volumes reduced way down too for the more frequent storm events, uh, for the entire site, so we're trying to replicate existing conditions the extent, uh, we can, um, that's why we talked about spreading out the stormwater, so we're not all just doing it at one point, we're kind of spreading out over the whole property, so it's going to the ground through the whole property, um, and this is kind of modern stormwater, stormwater investment in practice.
All right, and then just one, one last thing, uh, it appears that the lots that are closest to the existing homes, uh, it, it looks like the structures are on the, on the plan, they look like they really haven't moved much, last, uh, time for the cluster development, we talked about the vegetation and trees specifically that would create some type of natural buffer between the properties, between the existing properties and the, the new lots, to kind of, because of the topology of the land, the homes, the existing homes are at a higher elevation and they look down over the proposed, uh, structures, and so you kind of lose a sense of, uh, privacy, uh, for both, in both cases, for the new people will be, uh, more, you know, they'll, their properties will be, uh, more visible to the homes, is, has any consideration been given to, uh, changing in the buffer, the landscape of buffer?
We don't have the ability to create that buffer when we're not doing a, um, cluster subdivision, unfortunately, the landowner can, even if we had it put in, the owner of the home that would move in could change that buffer if they so choose on their own land.
Okay, and then just one last thing, back to the roadway, when we talk about a public roadway, who, who has the rights to determine that it's a public roadway? Is it the planning board, is it the town engineer, is it town meeting?
Ultimately, it goes to town meeting in the long run, uh, when the, when the roadway is done, as long as it meets the engineering design for it to become a public roadway, it goes in front of Board of Selectment and they bring it to FinCom, and then it goes in front of town meeting, and we vote on it on town meeting floor.
If, at, any of those steps, uh, was not approved, then it would stay a private road.
Obviously, it goes through those committee meetings, so just like any other, any other approval.
So if it went to town before town meeting and they didn't approve that, then it would stay a private road.
Exactly, um, you and I have both been on town meeting floor, we haven't seen any of those change yet, but...
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, just to let you know, real quick, um, on the board, uh, yes, we only have three voting members right now, uh, the anticipation is that we're not gonna make a final decision today, so John Farmer will have voting power when he comes back through the minutes, okay?
Good to hear, good to hear, thank you.
Can you respond to one question about the right-of-way?
Go ahead.
Um, just to be clear, the fifty-foot easement that crosses the town land here already exists, it's shown on a plan, and this, uh, plan does not change that location, we worked with that location, as shown on the plan, it's fifty feet wide, and, uh, that's recorded in the, in the registry of deeds at Isber, it's a specific layout that's already there, just to be clear.
Okay. Um, anything else from the audience, comments, questions? Sir, go ahead.
I'm, uh, Richard Ash, three fifteen Maple Street, um, I'm very much in favor of this, uh, new project, the project, and, um, I'm good with it, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Please.
Hi, my name is Laurie Dixon, and I live at three oh three Maple Street, and I've been there for thirty-three years, and I just wanna say that I'm in favor of this project.
Okay. Uh, you, sir, yeah, you, you can, you can be next.
I'm Richard Palma Cial, I have lived for five years in Danvers, uh, I own three oh seven Maple Street where I live, and I rent out three oh five Maple Street to a tenant, and I am highly in favor of the project, there is plenty of buffer between our land, that's actually on our land, to the project.
Okay.
My name is Pat Dixon, I live at three oh three Maple Street, and I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. Sir, you can be next, sir.
Good evening, I'm Richard Schaefer, I'm a abutter at three oh one Maple Street, um, I mean, I have no financial, uh, be convinced for this project, for my speaking. A couple of things were interesting, um, knowing from last time we went through this, I had talked to people that said they had not seen the plan... the plans before the board meeting. Does everybody on the board have a set of these plans?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because it was sort of odd to me last time that we're, the board is voting on something they didn't have the plans to. On, I'm not sure where to start here. One of them on the right-of-way, she mentioned there's a very specific right-of-way laid out, the registry of deeds. I'd like them to show you the registry of deeds layout superimposed on that, and where the original deed right-of-way stops and they continue. Also, the shape of it and exactly where it overlays. I don't believe it's the same. The traffic thing was amusing, but no, if somebody stops to take a left turn, there's not enough room for another vehicle to go around there. I'm curious if the traffic people has talked to the town, town damers police, to see how many tickets have been written right there, at what speed is the average ticket written for speeding, and also the number of traffic accidents that's happened within, I don't know, two-hundred feet either way of that intersection. There is a number. It happens every year. It's a regular occurrence. The other thing was the water. I was curious, is this going to be, now that they're doing this, is this going to be clear-cut? Are they going to take all the trees down from this and bulldoze it and flatten it?
I can't answer that specifically. At least for the land that's going to be redeveloped, then the trees will be cut from that, including the lot sizes of the land. But not, there is going to be a portion of it that's going to be untouched beyond that.
So a lot of the water filtration that's done naturally by the trees and everything, those trees will all be gone. So everything that they're developing will have to take, you know, extra from what, you know, what is there now.
Right.
You guys were down there and walked it. They had a survey at the time, so you saw where the end of it, where the wetlands was and the surveyors things. If you go down there right now, you'll have to have waiters on to get to them. You went in the wintertime, and we had thirty percent average water in the past three months from when you guys went down there. So it's different. All the water will go through the filtration. You know, I'm glad to see that. But it does end up down in the wetlands.
Correct.
Also, different variances they're looking for. A lot of them pertain to the road. And I don't know what the thought process was, but if it was me, being a private road, that means I'd have to take care of all that. What they were doing was looking to cut corners again or make things easier, cheaper, basically. You got to make a buck when you're doing something like this. So if they want to be doing that, then they're looking for variances. But now it's going to be town-owned. So that means when things don't hold up, or they don't last as long as they should, the town will be paying for it. Also, a concern about catch basins, you said, you explained how you get the sediment at the bottom and everything else. Are those going to be town-owned also? And that will be town maintenance to take for that. There's a lot of fill-in there, and I'll let the environmental people deal with that. The eight percent grade on that, I know is legal. But just to let you know, Massachusetts or anywhere in the United States, a highway is not allowed to be more than seven percent grade. So this is a little bit higher than that. Most towns won't plow anything over ten percent. The equipment won't do it. Same with fire departments. They'll do what they have to do, but they don't like to see anything above a certain thing. So this falls within it, but it's something to think about for safety reasons. One other thing, they mentioned that you're going to have to do an environmental impact on the other plan. Do they not have to do that now?
They, I'm going to let David answer that one.
Sure. I mean, in short, the answer is no. I think the other ask during the special permit phase was if they, essentially, the open space would be gifted to the town. So before they accepted it, we don't want to accept Roundfield, obviously. So that was really kind of part of that.
Okay.
In this current case, the town's not, wouldn't be accepting the, well, any open space because there isn't any. There's just difference between the two plans, really.
Okay. So what?
They are still going to have to go in front of Conservation Commission. So there is going to be some environmental impact looked at through the committee over there.
Okay. Because there are some concerns. I looked up at the town's assessors map. There are some sections right in there that's going to be on the property here that are listed as endangered. So I'll let the other board handle that. That's probably all I have to say, I think, is I think you're putting too many houses in a section that's wooded. Well, now, not going to be wooded. As far as a rail trail goes, that's the nearest thing to downtown, the rail trail, that you walk through, and you're in a nature spot with the wetlands on one side and the wooded hillside on the other side. You don't get anything out of that until you get out to the high school woods or to the reservoir. You know, that's the only thing around downtown, and that'll be gone. Sad to see it go.
All right. Just one quick comment is, it's more semantics. They're not asking for variances. It's waivers. And I know it, I know it sounds like semantics, but, yeah. You want to comment on that?
I just wanted to comment on one thing, because I didn't want it to be misunderstood. When I was responding to Mr. Doug's comment, I was talking about the layout within the right-of-way layout on the town portion.
Right.
Is not changing. That is in the exact location as it's shown. The right-of-way location does change as it can in areas that the developer controls. But in the area where the right-of-way crosses the town land, that area is the same as it is on the plan that's recorded at the registry.
Okay. There was a request that if we could get ahold of it, I know we can get the old plan, so we can take a look at that. Sir, you are the next person to handle.
Name is Jose Velazquez, and my wife and I live at 317 Maple Street. We are in favor of this project. As far as the traffic goes, we deal with that all the time. When we're going to turn, traffic stops behind us, and we get into the driveway, everybody goes, find their own business. I don't think that's going to be a considerable negative impact on the neighborhood. I think the town would benefit if the project was through. I mean, it's eight houses. You figure each house will pay, on average, five, six thousand dollars on taxes. Do the math. Close to fifty thousand dollars a year. Ten years is half a million dollars. I think the town will benefit. So we all have a financial interest on the project. My wife and I and my three kids, we've lived at 317 Maple for the past fourteen years. We intend to make Danvers our home. And I truly believe that proceeding with the project would benefit the long term. Thank you.
Anything else from the audience? Questions? Comments? Okay. Before I bring it back to the board, I just want to make one thing known, is that our board doesn't take economic sides on anything, whether it's taxes or not. We don't make any of our decisions associated with that. Not that it shouldn't be talked about. We just don't make any of those decisions. I'm bringing it back to the board for any particular comments, questions at this point in time after hearing, audience members. Nathaniel?
No.
Charles?
No.
Okay.
That's done.
So we have a few things that need to go over, because we need some stuff from staff, and I think there needs to be some information going back and forth. So unless there's anything else from either the applicant or from the board, I'm looking for a continuance at this point in time.
I move that we continue Beaver Brook Woods to July twenty-seven?
August.
August, August twenty-seventh.
Yes, we're taking the first meeting off in August.
That's right, August twenty-seventh.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Okay. Give the room a chance to clear. We'll let Jim know. So we'll take a brief break. Just let him know we're taking a brief break.
Sure.
Did you, are we taping this for John, or is he just going to sit here?
He has, boy, he has to watch the tape.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that.
He has to watch the tape.
I'm so used to coming up with...
We're going to continue on with the public hearings. We have Seventeen Cherry Hill Drive. I'm going to open with a public notice. Notice hereby, given that Damers Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Toomey Room, Damers Town Hall, One Sylvan Street, on Tuesday, July twenty-third, twenty nineteen, at seven p.m. relative to a request for a major modification to an approved site plan submitted by the H.L. Turner Group, Inc., for property at Seventeen Cherry Hill Drive in the industrial two zoning district as shown on assessors map twenty-nine, Lot One, pursuant to Section Four of the zoning bylaw to create twenty-five additional parking spaces at the facility. Copies of the application and plans are on file and available for public review in the Land Use and Community Service Department, Damers Town Hall.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, and members of the planning board. My name is Jerry Blanchett, and I'm Senior Vice President of Architecture and Engineering for the H.L. Turner Group, also a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth. And I have with me this evening Mark Baker, who's the facilities manager at Seventeen Cherry Hill, and Michael Hanson, who's our chief civil engineer. And for myself personally, I've been involved in multiple projects at Millipore for the better part of fifteen or so years. And I'm here basically to provide support to Mark, Millipore, and our engineering staff. And some of you may recognize this particular application. Our engineering staff did submit this last year as an official application. It was pulled probably a week or two prior to presentation and public hearing at the planning board. At the time, Millipore was not prepared to embark on the project, and now they're looking at doing so. And so the plan is to improve, obviously, parking, add additional parking, which is obviously what they need at their facility, but also provide some streetscaping, which is badly needed along this particular thoroughfare. And you'll see with Mr. Hanson's presentation, he's going to have discussions on streetscaping, on bio swales, and improving the entire frontage of the building. And so, having said that, I'd like to pass on the podium to Michael Hanson.
Well, thank you. Go to Mike Hanson with the H.L. Turner Group. Again, this is Millipore site on Cherry Hill Drive. The postwork is in the front of the building. Currently, all there is is a drop-off area, and they have two, they have a plenty of shifts here and they're desperately needing additional parking. So this was a spot that they would like to be able to get some parking in and allow, you want visitor parking in this area as well. Otherwise, they have to park down over, park right down here and walk across. So this will be a little more convenient. Currently, the site all drains to the road. There's a closed drainage system that picks up everything today. It's still going to do the same thing. It's still going to drain in the same direction. However, now, we're going to catch it into bio soil, and that'll be able to treat the runoff that's coming off the parking area. And there'll be a maintenance plan at Millipore will be responsible for for this. We've worked with the shade associates for the landscaping, and this plan shows, if you should have, I think you have a backup one copy of this. We did for it, this one as well. This shows the planting layout that Chad came up with for this. And all these plants are designed to be able to handle the runoff and help bio retention, yeah, bio retention swell. So allowing, what's going to happen, it's going to be a little depressed area. Water will come off. It'll work its way through here. It'll get some infiltration in it. There's a small riser pipe here that allows it, when it gets too high, to go into the closed drainage system. So that's the premise of the bio soil. The traffic pattern will be that traffic will come in on Cherry Hill. They'll access the drive that's here currently, come in on this side, and they'll be able to park here. And then on their exit will be up this end into the road. So it's just going to be one directional traffic. So it's just going to be one directional traffic. Even though it's an increase in impurities, we are actually going to be having a decrease in heat flows, and we will be getting some infiltration that we don't currently get today. And it, because of where the project is, this project is not triggering a conservation review. And the basic construction process would be, you know, we'd, part of this is grassed areas, you know, they would, they would scrape off the material, stop pilot, reuse what they can, and they'd come in, put in the pavement, and stripe it accordingly. Also, the light, there is a lighting plan, the lighting, there won't be any poles, the lighting will all be on the building, I'm sure there's already existing lighting there, there might be an additional one or two more lights, so it's, because they have, they have crews going around the clock here, so you have a lot good access for the people, so that they feel safe walking in and out of the building. Any questions on this?
I'm going to bring it out to staff first before the board.
Sure. Just really quick, just so the board knows, Mr. Hanson and I spoke, fairly lengthy conversation earlier today, I pointed out some comments from the engineering memorandum, I think he's going to be working on those.
Yeah, just like I mentioned, we did receive the engineering last week, we haven't had a chance to complete everything, but we fully will address their comments.
Yep.
And get that back to you and that as well.
Sure. There's a section, just so the boards will work, because you have the comments under new comments, I think Mr. Hanson and I spoke, those are easily adjustable, it really changes to pipe diameter and things like that, and piping materials, so that's an easy fix. But we did, and it was slightly confusing to, I think, the both of us, catch number three on the original comments. So assuming that this continues, the engineering division is going to be looking for an operation and maintenance procedure manual for the bioswale specifically. I know LID best practices at screen infrastructure going forward, something the town probably wants to do more of, I think their concern is just who and how it's going to be maintained, once that's documented, I don't think it necessarily should be an issue. Calculations for total suspended solids being caught, and then also essentially a hydro caddo analysis of the site, so Mr. Turner's offered to provide that. That's all I have.
Okay. I'll bring it out to the board, Nathaniel?
No, it sounds like a pretty good plan to me, but, I mean, as long as the town is happy with it, and the engineering design and the so forth, as David said, I have no questions.
Charles?
Yeah. Seems like it's all there.
Jim?
I've got to say this, this is probably the first time I've heard of a bioswale. So can you compare and contrast that with a detention or retention pond?
Well, detention pond, you're just attaining the water and slowly letting it out.
Mm-hmm.
The bioswale, perhaps, the idea of the bioswale is it's going to knock out the nutrients that, that runs off here, because you have the nitrogen and phosphorus, that's the thing that, the detention pond usually doesn't take out, it stays suspended in the water, then works its way into your drainage system. But because this is going to have vegetation, and the specific vegetation, maybe there's going to be a certain soil media that you use, it will knock out the phosphorus and nitrogen added to the stormwater. So it cleans the water better than just a typical detention, detention type system.
How deep is that going to be, do we know?
It's all, we're going down just a couple of feet, because we're just going to, because it's the first flush, it's like the first, like, one inch of rain, one to two inches of rain that gets in, that's the one that has the most pollution. And that's, so we're going to have a little depression, about like two feet, and then you also have like the six inches of topsoil, and then you have media of soil underneath that, that helps clean up the pollutants. And then a part of the system, and if you do get a bigger storm and it can't handle it, you already have the closed drainage system, and the catch bases that are already there, so then what will happen, it would work its way back into the drainage system.
I think we've actually had one of those.
Fidelity.
Yeah, I was just thinking that over on Endicott Street.
Yeah, fidelity.
Okay. Do they call it bioswale?
I don't know if they called it specifically that, but they talked about the plantings.
I think they did. And it, there's been another one, too.
And there's actually a wider area, too.
Yeah.
We've worked, Shadowly worked with finding plants that could handle that kind of situation.
Yeah.
And Millipore will be responsible to make sure that, you know, it's maintained correctly and clean.
For what it's worth, I think, Mr. Hanson's point, it's only about a foot, it goes from sixty-six point seven down to sixty-five on the shown plans. But I think more importantly, yeah, the point's well taken on water quality as opposed to just capturing the stormwater.
Looks like a depressed garden, maybe.
Yeah, pretty much.
A depressed garden.
There's all the things called rain gardens.
That's, I think that's what they call them.
This is just like a long rain garden, same idea.
Where's the sidewalk?
Sidewalk, it was sides that were on the door.
Jimmy on Cherry Hill?
Yeah.
The one actually on the private way on Cherry Hill itself? It's in front, it's to the south of the bioswale, correct?
There's no sidewalk on this.
There's no sidewalk.
On that side, it's only on the last, other side, across the street.
Yeah, I don't remember Cherry Hill having sidewalk.
No, there is.
I just don't remember.
Oh, right there, right there, actually. Yeah.
There is a walk.
No.
So the proximity of the, of the snow storage, is that, how's that potentially going to affect that bioswale?
Both sides of the snow storage would be going up to this end.
Yeah.
And some of the, the way it works, some of it will work its way back into the road, some of it will get here. One of the things that we are looking at is possibly they put a, like, a traditional catch base in it.
Mm-hmm.
To handle the runoff from the snow, which would be different than.
Yeah, do you use salt on the, with the salt products, perhaps disrupt that? If you salt the, you know, the driveway or the parking lot?
No, because the, what the, the plants should be salt tolerant, it's typically where you want to try to get in there, of course, you do these things next to roads. The salt goes through with the snow, it doesn't accumulate in the soil, it works its way through. That's one of the problems with salt, you can't take it out of the water, it just goes with it.
That's all I have.
Peg?
Gee, someone just told me the other day that the salt that we have put on our roadway and our developments was killing all the grass on the side. I wonder why, if it's going right through.
Because those plants aren't, those plants aren't salt tolerant.
So what you're planting there is salt tolerant?
Yeah, that's what we're working with.
Are there grasses that are salt tolerant?
There are certain grasses that are salt tolerant.
Okay.
You'll see more of those on the Cape, a lot of the salt grasses there are more.
That's interesting, thank you. That gives me some information. I don't really have a problem for this, but this is just, you're just putting those twenty-five parking spaces in between Cherry Hill and the building, right? And then you're having this bioswale. And you have other parking, too, right? You've been here before for us park, for parking.
There's an existing parking lot across the street.
Right.
There is proposed parking over in this area, but at this point in time, Millipore's not moving forward with that.
Okay, I think we had that for, Jim just reminded me for reserve parking.
That was a couple of years ago, that came in front of, the Conservation Commission blocked that.
Yeah.
But at this point in time, Millipore's...
Well, they blocked it?
They, they did, there was a sidewalk on it.
Blocked it, oh, okay, because I believe we approved it. Is that the one where there is a little bridge, too, coming over, or, no?
No, that's a different site.
That's a different site, okay, sorry.
Habiaum.
There is a preliminary design of parking, but at this point in time, we're not...
Okay, okay. I don't really have a problem with it. I think, I like the bioswale, and I think it's a great idea. What'd you say?
No, no, he giggled that we kept coming up with the names of the different sites.
Well, they'll meld together at some point.
They do sometimes, yes. I think the site's going to, it's an improvement on the site overall. I'm looking forward to having engineering and you guys get together, make sure everything gets hammered out, so. Anything else from the board before I bring it up to the audience?
Nope.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? You sure, Matt?
We're missing our other usual resident, I haven't seen him in a while. He's on vacation?
Oh, yeah, it's July.
Oh, wow, okay.
Matt's taking his place.
Okay.
Bill said, Matt, you have to go.
Okay.
So, I think right now we're, oh, we have to extend it, okay. Unless there's anything else from the applicant or the board, we're going to be looking for an extension, and we're not meeting for a month. So we have to extend out the action date to the August thirtieth also. So do I have a motion to continue?
So, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
So this also extends the action date, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The meeting's the twenty-seventh.
The meeting is the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, we just, the action date had to be moved, because we're taking that week, we're taking the first week, and I'm... Good luck, we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
So, other matters we have in front of us.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I need to, I need to accuse myself.
No problem.
On the remaining matters?
I'm curious about the remaining matters myself.
If you could fancy that, be mindful.
Because we don't have anyone to present. I love Matt, Matt's going to present. Are we going to take all three at the same time, or are we doing them one at a time?
Doing them one at a time, unfortunately, for one project, there's two streets, so it's two factors.
So this is Whipple Hill subdivision, lots one through twenty-three, and lot twenty, Sandpiper Circle, Phase One. We're looking for a request to extend the completion, correct?
That is correct. We would like an extension of the completion date for one year.
That'll be July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, so everything's super clear.
Any questions from the board, Peg?
No.
Charles? Nathaniel? No. I don't have anything, so.
Okay, I don't either.
Yeah, so I'm looking for an extension on... Sandpiper, thank you. Whipple Hill lots one through twenty-three, and lots twenty for Sandpiper Circle, Phase One.
I move that we extend the completion date on Whipple Hill subdivision, lot one through twenty-three, and lot twenty, Sandpiper Circle, until July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
And now we have a similar extension request for Whipple Hill lots thirteen, one, Carol through, lots thirteen through one?
Through nineteen.
Oh, there's a digit.
Thirteen.
Thirteen through nineteen.
Thirteen through nine, oh, I'm looking at my agenda.
I apologize.
No, no, it's okay, typo. Lots thirteen through nineteen, Carroll Way, Phase Two.
I move that we extend the completion date of Whipple Hill subdivision, lot thirteen to nineteen, Carroll Way, Phase Two, until July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Woodland Road, thirty-three Princeton Street.
Woodland Road, I can address this unless Mr. Hanson would like to?
Right.
Okay. So I've been working with, in concert with Mr. Thompson, over the last couple of weeks and days, to get this ready to close out. He has completed everything that I have asked, but for on the plan itself, there is a parcel that contains the detention pond that filters all of the stormwater for the site that is in fact in his name. I made Mr. Thompson aware of this, and had told him unless he would like to own, operate, and maintain that in perpetuity, he should do something about that. Waiting on the feedback, but in the meantime, I think I have a fix for the board for this evening, as we need to either close it out or extend, I think we can close it out, essentially pending the endorsement of the plans themselves, until we either get a grant of easement to the town, or a gift of the parcel to the town, or some other mechanism that Mr. Thompson chooses to go forward. That sounds savvy to the board. Do you have a certificate, but welcome comments or questions?
Anything?
No, fine.
I would be thoroughly surprised if Mr. Thompson decided he wanted to take care of that.
I don't think that he does.
So, we'll let, Peg's been calling.
I get the long one tonight, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
This is to certify that a meeting of the Davis Planning Board held on July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted. We, the Davis Planning Board, having been requested by Mr. John M. Thompson, trustee of New England Land Trust, to release the performance guarantee in the form of a treasurer's check in the amount of seven thousand dollars, dated January twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, do hereby vote to release the amount of seven thousand dollars held in surty upon the following condition. One, endorsement of the as-built plan, road acceptance plan, and road profile plan by the planning board be held until the applicant clarifies either grant of easement or gift of parcel A to the town on the plan entitled "Street Acceptance, Street Acceptance Plus Woodland Road." Street accepts, I'm sorry, Street Acceptance Plan, Woodland Road.
Have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next is briefing.
Briefing, I will try to be brief.
Excellent.
In the planning board's packet, I have given you a letter from a, I believe, husband and wife, but it's irrelevant to people, essentially complaining about the noise from, potentially, so they assume Merrimack Valley distributors. I do know, it came up that, I believe Merrimack Valley has a P.A. system outside, I think on the roof, but somewhere outside, that is making this noise, just making the board aware that you did receive that correspondence, I do plan on looking into it, involving the building commissioner going cold. You have been made aware, no other news on IRA, as I'm steamrolling things. And then the last item was, I was informed today by the town's IT division, that we, they will no longer support us using Dropbox.
Oh.
So, after scramble today, you might see a new form of software for your next meeting, which is from Microsoft SharePoint. I do apologize in advance, we're going to try to work out all the bugs before we throw that out to you.
You mean it's only one, we won't be able to open?
I surely, I surely, surely hope not.
You got a couple of Mac users over here, make sure that...
I am Mac, too.
It took me a year to get Dropbox to open.
I still don't, did you see me flipping back with, I'd lose it, and then I'd flip back to it.
The choice was out of my hands, believe me. So hopefully that all works out, if not, and they'll need us to discontinue before the next meeting, which I don't think is the case, we will have paper potentially as a backup.
Yeah.
Should we have let Jim back in?
He, I said to him about the briefing beforehand, he just said, we don't need him. He's good, that was it, I don't want to hold you up any longer than necessary.
I just have one question on IRA.
Yes.
So what are we looking at resolving? Is there, I mean, you, you've been in touch with Jeff?
Correct, Jeff Klein.
Yep.
So essentially where we're at is, I've gone out there a few times, haven't necessarily witnessed the panic buttons being used, so it could have been the case that the correspondence we received initially was literally the day after the planning board meeting. I'm going to assume, you know, it took a few days to take, to stick or to take hold. A gentleman who initially gave the complaint was named Mr. Thompson, incidentally. I do plan on reaching out to him to see if he's had an update, whether he does or he doesn't, so I think, I'm not sure if you made it right there, Bill, but Bill had said...
I have, yeah, I haven't had a chance to...
That's okay.
I almost went there tonight.
So we're monitoring it, but in any event, we do have the condition that you put on the last special permit that says we're due for a visit again.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we can hear what people have to say at that point.
Yeah, but that's like after construction, right?
It is. Like I said, in the meantime, I do periodically visit, we're down there for a couple other sites right, right near that area.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I'll try to stop by to go. I, I, the traffic was just too bad on one fourteen.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm up at weird hours of the day, like, all kinds of people.
Like if they're doing it at five o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Jump in my car with my cup of coffee, head out over, just about right. I'd be surprised if they're doing it this quickly after, but that doesn't mean they wouldn't. I have nothing else from staff, does anyone else have questions, comments, angry petitions for David?
Wait till she has them.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Then we'll be in touch, Dave, big time.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, good night.
Good night. Thank you very much.